We will call the January 4th, 2021, meeting of the Parker Town Council to order. All council members are present for this meeting of the first one of 2021, and I'm sure I echo everyone's sentiments in saying I'm glad that calendar turned on December 31st. But, one of the things that has been missing in this chamber for the last year has been the presence of a Cub Scout leading our Pledge of Allegiance. So, on Zoom, we have from Den 5, PAC 841, Jackson Cucarulo, to lead us in the pledge. So, Jackson, it's all yours.
Thank you very much for having me say the pledge from the town council. It's an honor. I'll just get right into the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Excellent. Thank you, Jackson.
Thank you.
All right. Next up on our agenda, we have the Parker Chamber of Commerce updates, and I believe I saw Kara Massa on.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Town Council. Thank you for having me, and Happy New Year. And I really enjoyed Jackson leading the Pledge of Allegiance, so thanks, Jackson. That was awesome. So, we have exciting news at the Chamber of Commerce. We have moved. Yay. You can kind of see my backdrop. That is where we are now located, over in the Parker Station Professional Offices. Our actual suite number is R16, so feel free to stop by and see us sometime. We are still unpacking boxes, but excited to be there. Also, we have our new 2021 Parker Magazine and Directory coming out this month, so keep your eyes open for that. We'll hopefully have those delivered to you in your mailboxes, as well as available at our Chamber office. On January 15th, we're going to be having our Board Retreat. We're excited to bring in a couple of our new Board members and see the other ones leaving. And we worked on a new strategic plan, some new member benefits, those kinds of things, as we really do a fresh start for 2021. So, really, really excited about that. Other than that, I think that is all of our big news for the Parker Chamber of Commerce this evening.
Excellent. Thank you, Kara. Any questions of Kara? Counsel? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Next up, we will have the Downtown Business Alliance updates. Mr. Schnell, I see, is on.
Hello. Happy New Year. Thank you for having us here. Welcome to 2021, and welcome to the new Town Council members. And congratulations on Mr. Toborg becoming mayor. For the DBA, you know, we've got a lot to look forward to in 2021. We have a couple new Board members that we're bringing up. We have Ashley Nagy. She's the GM of FICA, and she's going to be our new secretary. She replaces Dennis Huspenny, who served us. He's from Nerds to Go. And Shelley Mango, probably don't know who she is, but she represents 20 Mile Central, and she's going to be an at-large Board member, replacing Jeff Sams of JTS Realty. So, we look forward to 2021 with our new Board members. We're looking to bounce back. We have some key project initiatives that you know about, planters, entertainment decks, et cetera, that we're working on, and hopefully reviving some fun community events, like the Chili Cook-Off, and continue to add value to our members. So, we're excited to work with this new council, and we appreciate them. We appreciate the town staff, as always. And that's all we have.
Great. Thank you, sir. Any questions of Chris? Anyone? Thank you, sir. Thank you both for coming. Next up on our agenda is public comments pursuant to the Town Administrator's Emergency Order of 8/2020. Public comments for items that are not on the agenda are made electronically. If you have issues making them electronically, you can contact our Clerk's Office. And I don't believe we have received any public comment tonight. Thank you. Next up, report items and comments from Mayor and Counsel. We will start to my right with the newly seated Councilman Todd Hendricks.
Thank you, Mayor. Hello, everyone. First, I'm addressing the public. It's surreal, but I'm excited to serve and just going through orientation, trying to learn things about the town. I also attended a fundraiser with the mayor to support the Donut House through Coffee Cabin, so it was really cool to see business, small business helps small business. Other than that, I'm just looking forward to the New Year.
Great. Thanks, sir. Councilmember Pogue.
Yeah. I would like to welcome our new council and our new mayor. This is going to be awesome. I'm looking forward to working with all of you. We've got a lot of things we're working through with the council, and we are at some point going to have an election, right? April 20th. So, a lot of issues to evaluate prior to that. So, I welcome your input.
Excellent. Thank you. Councilmember Diak.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To kind of further echo Councilmember Pogue's comments, you know, welcome both Councilmember Hefta, Councilmember Hendricks. This is the first meeting, quite honestly, the first gathering all of us have collectively had since we were sworn in on, what, December 14th. So, we sort of took, not to say a winter siesta or a winter break, if you will. We were still active. The mayor and myself were, I crossed paths with them a few times on various meetings regarding the weekly county COVID call, as well as restaurants. Myself and again, Mayor Toborg were very active in trying to visit the local restaurants and bars to see how they were doing, and quite honestly, to advocate for the Douglas County Small Business Grant, as well as the Douglas County Restaurant and Event Venue Grant. And was positive to see a few of them actually get approved within a day. So, kudos to the county. Kudos to our staff, too, who was integral in the five-star program rollout. Couple other items. I've just had a Dr. Cog-related item I dealt with. There's a program called the Safer Main Streets Program. It's $77 million to further or make our roads safer. Dr. Cog, along with CDOT, have this program. We're trying to work through some administrative issues and roll that money out to get awarded. Also, E470, we're in a transition period at this point. Commissioner Roger Partridge, Douglas County Commissioner Roger Partridge, was the Vice Chair. He is terming out, so I've been working with Commissioner Partridge, as well as E470 staff, Chair Adams County Commissioner Chaz Tedesco, on trying to get boned up on my future Vice Chair duties. And, Mr. Mayor, I think that is all I have. Thank you.
Excellent. You've been a busy guy. Councilmember Hefta, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And just to reiterate with new Town Councilmember Todd Hendricks, thank you to the residents of Parker. Councilmember Hendricks and I did not get a chance on camera on December 14th to express our thanks to the residents of Parker for voting us in as Town Council members, and so we would like to reiterate that thank you. And also to our team of supporters as well. Thank you very much, and our families, and our husbands and wives, most respectively. And also, I'd like to just give a big thank you to the town staff for all their hard work of getting Councilmember Hendricks and myself up to date this past two months. We greatly appreciate all the knowledge and the time and the effort you have taken to help us get up to speed, so we are effective and ready to go for our duties today on January 4th. Also, I think everybody can agree that our holiday decorations were absolutely beautiful for the town, and I know that the public works and the team that put those decorations together should be commended because many people in our community really enjoyed the beauty of our town this holiday season. And again, thank you, a big shout-out to the Parks and Recreation, as well, as they get ready to accommodate more people during this time. I know many residents of Parker really enjoy those facilities, and so they will be very excited to gain greater capacity of these facilities. So, thank you very much to many of the departments of the town. Thank you.
Thank you. So, from my report, obviously, I've been hanging around with Councilmember Diak, Councilmember Hendricks, and I know everyone else has been busy during the holiday season, but Parker was granted an early Christmas gift, if you will, the week of Christmas in the granting of the Five Star Variance Program. So, I want to say a special thanks to Commissioners Partridge, Thomas, and Layden for all their hard work on that. But I also want to acknowledge, because of the fact that this five-star program allowed our restaurants to go lower on the dial, so while the governor turned us red right before the holidays, some of our restaurants during the Christmas season were able to operate at an orange level. And this wasn't done magically. This had to have the requirement of five Town of Parker staff who went above and beyond to get out there the week of Christmas, the weekend directly after Christmas, the weekend of New Years, and get these people, these businesses, these restaurants inspected. So, I just want to say an extra thanks to Chris Vanderpool and Mandy Denny from the Clerk's Office, from Kim Heckber, who is repurposed from P3 and Economic Development, and then obviously to Danette Robinson and Chris, I'm sorry, Sherry Sullivan, I'm looking at Chris, and Sherry Sullivan from the Town Administrator's Office. I might fluff your name, but your actions and your just being angels out there during that season is truly thanked. And Michelle, thank you for your leadership in that as well. You know, we had restaurants that were flagging down inspectors and saying, "Come, us next, us next," and they got to everybody in right order, so I'm very appreciative of that. And I just want to say to, again, to my new council member colleagues, to my returning council member colleagues, I'm looking for a very productive and exciting 2021 with this council. So, thank you. With that, we will move on to the Consent Agenda. The Consent Agenda items are considered to be routine and will be enacted with one motion and one vote. There will be no separate discussion on consent agenda items unless council votes to remove an item for individual discussion. Ordinances on the consent agenda are for introduction purposes only and may not be removed for discussion.
Mr. Mayor, I would request that we remove Items 7A and B from the consent agenda.
Oh, you mean 6D and 6E, right?
No, it says seven here.
Those are already removed.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah. I'm sorry. 6D and E.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. It has been moved by Councilmember Pogue, seconded by Councilmember Hefta, to remove Items 6D and 6E from the consent agenda and add them to Section 7. I'm going to do a roll call vote. Councilmember Hendricks?
Yes.
Councilmember Pogue?
Yes.
Councilmember Diak?
Yes.
Councilmember Hefta?
Yes.
Great. Thank you. Now, I will entertain a motion on the consent agenda for Items A, B, and C.
I will move to make the motion to approve Consent Agenda items 6A through 6C.
Great. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Councilmember Pogue made the motion, Councilmember Diak second. We will do a roll call. Councilmember Hendricks?
Yes.
Councilmember Pogue?
Yes.
Councilmember Hendrick, I'm sorry, Diak?
Yes.
And Councilmember Hefta?
Yes.
It's going to be one of those nights. All right. On to the resolution.
So, for Item 6D, I can address that one. I think Carrie Glassburn can address 6E. So, with regard to 6D, under the Colorado Open Meetings Law, every year, Town Council is required to adopt a resolution designating one public place for the posting of meeting notices. In our case, the designated place is in front of Town Hall. As a practical matter, we also posted on the town's website.
Great. Thank you. Is there any questions of the attorney, or is there a motion on 6D?
I do just have one question. So, I was looking through the documentation on that resolution, and I didn't see the location mentioned in the resolution.
Section 1 says, "Town Hall shall constitute the designated public place for the posting of meeting notices as required by the Colorado Open Meetings Law," and that's in Resolution 21001.
Okay. Just wanted to verify that, because I didn't see it initially.
Got it. Is there a motion out there for 6D?
Yes. I recommend to approve Resolution 21-001 as part of the consent agenda.
Great. Is there a second?
I second.
Motion made by Councilmember Hefta, seconded by Councilmember Hendricks. We'll do a roll call. Councilmember Hendricks?
Yes.
Councilmember Pogue?
Yes.
Councilmember Diak?
Yes.
Councilmember Hefta?
Yes.
Thank you. On to Item 6E, and I believe Carrie Glassburn, you're going to take this one?
Yes, I will, although, Jim, you may have to jump in if I'm not using all the correct terminology, since this is still a little bit new for me. But, as you know, we have a cultural commission, and all of the commissioners are appointed by Town Council. So, we do have the option to have up to 11 slots on that commission. A few years ago, the commission decided, along with cultural staff, to keep it to nine members and allow there still to be two open slots. So, as of right now, because there were several vacancies that occurred during that time, and we chose not to fill them. So, right now, we have four members who are on the commission, whose term will go through December 31st of this year of 2021. But, as of December 31st, 2020, we had five members whose terms expired. These commissioners can agree to continue on, and we mutually agree that all five of those will serve once again. And of those five, Diane Roth has agreed to serve as our Commission Chair as well. So, I don't know what specific questions you have, Jim, and I can jump in there, but that's the situation.
Great. Thanks, Carrie. Questions?
Yes. Since I personally don't know any of these individuals or any of their history, does that action have to be taken tonight?
Sorry. Does the vote need to be taken? Is that what you're saying?
Yes. Or can it be deferred to a later meeting?
Well, I can provide you, in the interim, I can get you bios for all of them. We do have that on our website. All of them have served at least one term, if not more, and have joined us and been appointed for their various, some of them have scientific backgrounds, some of them work in the arts, some of them are artists themselves. So, there were reasons why they were interested in joining in the first place, and many of them serve on different committees within the commission. So, I can certainly share that background with you. If we delay the vote, we will have to delay our meetings. We meet six times a year. One of them is coming up in January. So, and per all of the policies of the town, we have to have the agenda publicly displayed in a certain amount of time. So, a delay would mean that we have to move our agendas or our schedules for meeting. So...
So, to follow up?
If there are specific questions, I can try to get those answered for you.
To follow up on what Carrie said, the term of those five commission members ended on December 31st. So, at present, there is no quorum for the commission to meet unless you make the reappointments. And again, these are folks that have served on the commission at least one term, and I think Diana Roth has been on for many, many years.
Many, yes. Several of them have.
Okay. Councilmember Diak?
Yeah. Thank you. Yeah, I mean, to me, being on the Cultural Commission as the liaison for, I think I've been eight years with former Councilmember Holland, former Councilmember Lewis, Diane has been in Parker for a long time. She has stepped up, and she is the Chair, so I would have no problem with her, as well as the others. I mean, all of them, to Carrie's point, have served an integral role. They are involved in at least a couple of subcommittees, you know, Art and Public Places, you know, other committees. I'm blanking out here, but I mean, to me...
Yeah, we have a history committee. We have a scientific committee. We have the Parker Quest. We do the Honey Festival. So, there's many different events, and the adult lecture series. So, there's all kinds of things that we put on during the year that they either have come up with the ideas, or they help execute them, or they are even volunteering the day of. So, they play different roles throughout the year on the projects that we do.
Yeah, we've tried to encourage longevity, I guess, with our volunteers. And I mean, if there's a challenge or a need for diversification, we can always talk about those two additional seats. But, you know, to me, in sitting with these people for the last couple of years, I can recommend all four of them.
Councilmember Hefta, any questions or comments?
My only comment would be is that I do have met Ms. Diane Roth, and I do feel that she is very well qualified in that role.
Okay. Anything else?
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry.
Actually, a couple of years ago, I was a Commissioner, and I can also verify the qualifications of the people wanting to be reappointed.
I think my only comment and request is that in the future, which I think we've been discussing, is that we have better reporting to council on their individual, you know, the council that we're appointing's role and what they're actually doing, because we have gotten zero feedback, except when they come for, you know, a budget approval item, but no other policy approval or anything has ever come to us. So, I'm just saying we need more interrelationship between us.
I'll entertain a motion.
And just so you know, we didn't put it on today's agenda, because we thought it would be a bit presumptive to introduce them to all of you if you hadn't approved their renewal. But, we do have it to get in front of you with at least the ones that are being reappointed. So, that will come on a, I believe we have it on the schedule for the 19th, so you will get to meet them. And I know that the plan is for all of us, all of the departments, to get in front of you more often throughout the year, and the Cultural Commission will be a part of that, where we'll be giving you updates from the cultural side.
I appreciate that. And I would also like, you know, what are their goals for what they want to accomplish? What are the resources that they're looking at? There's a lot of questions that have never been approached with any answers.
Okay. We will make sure we include that in our updates to you.
All right. Thank you.
All right. So, now entertain a motion on Resolution Number 21-003.
I'll second that. I'll make the motion. I thought you were going to make the motion.
I move to approve Resolution Number 21-003.
Okay. Is there a second?
I will second that.
All right. It's been moved by Councilmember Hendricks, seconded by Councilmember Pogue. We'll do a roll call. Councilmember Hendricks?
Yes.
Councilmember Pogue?
Yes.
Councilmember Diak?
Yes.
And Councilmember Hefta?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, Carrie.
Thank you.
We will move down into Item Number 7, Resolutions. Item A, Resolution Number 21-002, a resolution calling for a special election for the Town of Parker to be held on April 20th, 2021, to fill a vacancy on the Town Council of the Town of Parker pursuant to Section 2.9C of the Town of Parker Home Rule Charter. Mr. Maloney?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As indicated by the title, the purpose of the resolution in front of you at this time would allow for one election to address two vacancies. But, there are some unique facts that I want to at least get on the record and then just have a brief discussion on those facts, because as you know, the charter allows you to appoint, as well as to call an election. And there's also some dates that you need to have a full understanding of in order to make a fully informed decision on the resolution that's before you this evening. So, at least the pertinent facts are, on December 14th, Councilmember Toborg resigned as a council member in order to be sworn in as mayor. And the resignation of Councilmember Toborg created a second vacancy on Town Council. The first vacancy was created when Renee Williams resigned from Town Council. The election to fill this vacancy has already been scheduled, and it's been scheduled for April 20th of this year. It's important to note that candidates for this vacancy will begin circulating petitions on January 19th. So, in a matter of two weeks, the process is going to be full-blown in terms of filling the first vacancy. With regard to the Toborg vacancy, the Town Council's required by charter to appoint a council member no sooner than 10 days nor later than 30 days from the date of the vacancy. Date of the vacancy is December 14th. Or call a special election within 90 days of the date of the election. So, the Town Council has until January 13th, 2021, to fill the vacancy. So, you basically have another week, if that's what you want. The Town Council also has until March 14th, 2021, to call a special election to fill the vacancy. So, if you can't agree on an appointment, you can take the full time through March 14th, 2021, to call a special election to fill the second vacancy. In order to hold one special election on April 20 of this year to fill the Renee Williams vacancy and the Jeff Toborg vacancy, and to avoid the cost of holding two separate elections, then I would recommend the Town Council approve the resolution that is before you this evening, which is 21-2. Town Council action is needed tonight in order to meet the election deadline set by state law for an April 20 election. For example, the pre-candidate meeting for the April 20 election is scheduled for January 13th, next Wednesday.
Wow.
And as I indicated, the candidates for the And as I indicated, the candidates for the Williams vacancy will start circulating petitions on the 19th. In order to have both vacancies addressed as a part of one election, candidates need to be able to circulate petitions for both vacancies on the 19th. On the other hand, if town council fills the Toborg vacancy by appointment, there will be no need to adopt Resolution 21002. And as I indicated, at least by charter, you have until January 13th to make that decision. Additionally, if the town council desires to hold two separate elections, again, assuming you can't or won't make an appointment, the town council has until March 14th to call a special election to fill the Toborg vacancy, which election, if held, would probably have to wait until July. So at this point in the discussion, is there a person that all four members of town council can agree to appoint? If not, then my recommendation would be that town council adopt Resolution 21-2 tonight to avoid the cost associated with having two elections, one in April and then one possibly as late as July. So that is the background associated, at least, with this particular matter that's before you. So there's a lot of dates I threw out, so if you have any questions, I'm prepared to respond.
Great. I feel John Diak has some questions.
No, I just, I guess I can answer Mr. Maloney's question. Is there one person? I don't believe there is one person that all four of us can agree to, and keeping it short and sweet, that's the answer.
Okay.
So in full disclosure, I invited council to some meetings before they took office. So we discussed this before they took office, where it would then preclude us from having these discussions because of the public notice rules.
Because of the open meetings law. At that point, two of you were not elected officials.
Right. So I do believe I was legal in doing that, and we did have some extensive discussions on the issue. It wasn't, you know, like Councilman Diak said, at that point, we were not able to reach a consensus.
Okay. Councilmember Hendricks?
Yeah, so to echo what Councilwoman Pogue said, we did meet three times. It was very cordial. We couldn't come to an agreement on criteria or a person, but we did try, and I'm sorry, we couldn't pick a person for appointment, but we're off to the special election, looks like.
Councilmember Hefta?
Yes, I just would echo Councilman Hendricks' sentiments and Councilman Pogue's and Councilman Diane's sentiments. There are many fine individuals in our community that's there. It is a testament to us trying to come to consensus on this, and we did try. There are many fine, qualified individuals in our community to serve on town council, but we could not come to a consensus.
Okay, so council, you've answered the first question. There's no consensus, so then are there any questions about Resolution Number 21-002 that remain? Or are we ready for a motion?
Ready for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I will make the motion that we approve Resolution Number 21-002, Series 2021.
Great.
I will second the motion.
It's been moved by Councilmember Pogue, seconded by Councilmember Hefta. Chris, are you ready for a, okay, your vote should pop up on your screen?
How cool.
Don't forget to hit the save button. That was my trick.
Motion passes four to zero. Thank you. Moving on to Item Number 7B, Resolution Number 21-005, a resolution to adopt Town Council Policy Statement 1-2021 concerning investments.
So I can provide some, a brief background unless there's going to be a motion to continue?
Yeah, so, Mr. Mayor, with council having a January 11 study session that touches on a few of these items, I'd like to propose a motion to continue this item to a date certain of January 19th.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Sure. It's been moved by Councilmember Diak, seconded by Councilmember Pogue, to move Item Number B, Resolution Number 21-005, to a date certain of 1/19/2021. Chris, do you want me to call a roll call?
No.
Okay, then your votes will be popping up.
Yeah.
And that motion passes four to zero. With no other business before the town council, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. I think Cheryl had the move. So it's been moved by Councilmember Pogue, seconded by Councilmember Hendricks, and this will be a, do you have a vote? Do me a call, okay, roll call. Councilmember Hendricks?
Yes.
Councilmember Pogue?
Yes.
Councilmember Diak?
Yes.
We are adjourned at 7:37.